Calling the meeting to order at 6:05 PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, April 24, 2023. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. As always, we start the night with the Board and administration role calls. Mr. Felth, here. Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Danielson?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Getzko?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Henen?
Here.
Mr. Gertin?
Here.
Ms. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. Gronseth?
Here.
Ms. Dimmler?
Here.
Mr. Veal?
Here.
Mr. Samansky?
Here.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There have been no public comments for tonight, so we're going to move on to our first discussion and action item. A motion to approve the agenda and addendums.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, second by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes for the March 20, 2023 meeting, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Will the proposal be presented?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Getzko, because I heard your name or heard your voice. Projected. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving right along to the recognitions, presentations, and showcase, the Athena Award. Mr. Samansky.
Thank you. Oh, it is my pleasure to introduce our Athena recipient for this year. The Athena is based on athletic achievement over a high school career. It was, it is selected by the female head coaches, not female head coaches, but head coaches of female sports. That's what I meant to say. There's a banquet on Friday, May 5, to honor all of the Athena recipients across the state, those schools that are participating in it. And it is my great pleasure to introduce our Athena recipient, Mercedes Bernmeister.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up is the robotics program review. Mr. Henen.
Good evening. I guess I would just like to invite Jeremy Basquez, the robotics coach, up here to, you can introduce that a little bit more like the season, and then.
I don't know where to stand, if I'll stand here.
Just wondering, introduce yourself and what grade you're in. You have a good start.
I'm Sam Charnas, I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Liam Solven, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Augustin Montes, I'm also a sophomore.
I'm Quinn. We set this up. I'm Quinn C. Three, and I'm tenth grade.
We are all on the WM Robotics team. And I guess we're just gonna tell you who we are and what we do. So this is our robot that we design. We make a new one every year. So we get a new game every year from FIRST, which is the organization that does all this stuff, I guess. And we get a game, and there's a bunch of challenges, and there's a lot of different ideas that get thrown around. One thing that I think is really cool is that it's a co-operation. So teams are encouraged to cooperate with each other, find new ideas, and kind of steal from each other, I guess. We have a lot of different kind of sub-teams that'll each do their own different thing. There's mechanical, electrical, programming, marketing, and business. So we have three teams that work on the robot, and then two teams that work on things outside of the robot, which I think is kind of cool, because it's not just the robot. There's other things that you can do. You can raise money, so we can buy stuff to build the robot. Or you can work on social media stuff and raise awareness, so that people know who we are. And it teaches a lot of different skills, not just engineering and programming and stuff. So I guess, oh yeah. So we have the T-shirt robot, or T-shirt can robot, which we made as an off-season thing, so that we can kind of raise awareness and get our name out there more. So we have used it at sporting events, and also at Rails to Trails, where we launched candy out of it. Yeah, it's one of those things we're trying to do to help raise awareness to who we are. Guess I'll give it to Liam, and he'll explain the game.
Yeah, so this year's game was called Charged Up, and the goal was to get cubes onto platforms and like different cones onto poles. And if you could get three in a row, you'd get a link, I'm pretty sure they were called. And that'd be worth more points than just like three cubes, or three cones, or a combination of the two. So like, it was really heavily cooperation-based, because you know, if you had a team where, you know, only people could grab cubes, per se, yeah, it was gonna be really hard to get those link points, which would really set you back. And then at the end game, which is the last 30 seconds of it, there was this balancing station where, where you know, your team would roll up on it, and if they were just on it, but it wasn't balanced, they'd be, I think it was like five points per robot. I don't remember the exact numbers. And if it was balanced, I think it was around 10. So it was like a real, a real good thing to, you know. So it was a real good thing if you could cooperate with your team to make sure it was balanced, because that would also elevate your points and also get you a ranking point, which is how the top teams are decided.
Another thing that is new for us this year is that we qualified for state. So we're one of the top 36 teams in the state. So I think in a week-ish, we get to go to the U of M. And play a bunch of stuff there.
On May 6, we'll be able to go to the U of M and compete in what is essentially a smaller-scale version of the first regional event. And we just compete to see what team in the state would score highest there.
Would you guys like a demonstration of the robot?
Absolutely.
Of course.
Yeah. Yeah. Awesome. Yeah. That's so cool. Awesome.
How many prototypes did you have before you settled on this final robot?
So we kind of designed this, and then looked to see if other teams were doing something similar. And then we just kind of took ideas from them a little bit. We had two prototypes, I think. And they were both kind of just that, but simpler. No pneumatics, no, no air. So yeah, we just kind of had two things, you grabbed stuff with your arms.
And does it have a name? Did you name it?
Yes.
Walter.
I thought maybe it was Jim Burns 2.0, since I see that. The advertisement.
So how many competitions do you have? So you're talking about your different iterations of this robot. But how many competitions do you do prior to your kind of regionals and then on to state?
Depending on how confident we are in our robot's abilities, we do, we have a chance of signing up for a pre-competition event, which is hosted by basically any school in the state. And we just go to practice before we go to regionals. There is also another event called Week Zero, where it's a purely cooperational event, where everybody can go to test out their robots in a mock field built to be essentially the same as the one we would see in the actual first competition. And there, multiple teams can see how their robots would work in an actual game-like situation. And other teams can also trade information about any things they would like to like share with other teams. We, there was another team we spoke to that would give us tips on how to build the grabber arm to better pick up different objects, and we did take a couple hints from them.
Nice. How long is your season, and how many days a week do you meet?
So the build season starts the first weekend in January and ends the first weekend in March.
Okay. Wow. That's a lot of time.
It goes on longer than that, but the first weekend in March is when we have our competition up in Duluth.
Okay.
So there's five different weeks that have competitions. And then after that, there's Worlds. So if you qualify for Worlds, you can go. We did once, which, I don't know, none of us were there. So.
Now's your chance, Sam.
Yeah. Yeah.
In terms of practice days, we usually have a schedule of Tuesdays and Thursdays before the season begins.
And Saturdays.
And Saturdays.
Before the season begins, we only meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays, usually from when school ends to 5:30.
Okay.
But once the, once competition begins, and we're actually building the robot for the game, then we'll start to meet on Saturdays too, much earlier in the day. And then we also sometimes stay later than 5:30, usually just till 6:00 on weekdays.
What do you do with your former robots? Do you use them again, or try to make them better, or do you recycle them, or?
So some teams keep them apart, or keep them together, I mean. We don't, we're probably gonna keep this one together, so we can use it to practice, because there's a lot of stuff that's valuable, because we have a new drivetrain setup that we've had in previous years. So we're gonna keep it together, so we can practice with that. In the past, we've just kind of stripped them down, taken motors off, basically.
How many, how many students are on the team, and what, what makes a good member for the robotics team?
There are about 15 of us, I think. Those people who are interested in working, basically.
Yeah, depending on the department, there can be a lot of qualities that will be beneficial to the team. Because there's like a vast difference between the mechanical and marketing teams, as one team should be better at speaking with other people, getting sponsorship deals, and running the social media account. While we also have people like Sam, who build the robot and actually come up with ideas for how we're gonna be playing the game. Then there's also people who just can drive the robot like better. And those will usually be the ones that we choose to play for us in the first competition. Like this year, it was me and Quinn. We would both, we worked together in controlling the robot, as you could see. I control the robot's actual movement on the ground, while he controls the functions of the arm. And we have to work together to play something on the chair, as you could see.
Maybe lastly, I know through the high school construction project, we were able to add a designated robotics lab. How does that benefit the team to have your own space?
About that.
It's helped us a lot to have our own space. I wasn't on the team when we didn't have our own dedicated space. But from what I can tell, it's definitely benefiting to have somewhere to put our own stuff, to have our own dedicated spaces for building the robot, not needing to clean up and make space for another event. We could just keep things there, and then immediately start working as we enter the robotics team.
Is that room used during the school days as well, or no?
No.
No? Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Best of luck. Best of luck at state. Yes.
Now the trick is to get it out.
I mean, it can stay if it wants to.
Yeah. How do they transport this? Is it in a van?
Good question. That's a good question.
How are you guys transporting this back? Does it go in a van?
Truck.
A truck? Okay.
Just drives on its own.
Yeah. Just drives back to school.
Way off.
Nice.
It's impressive. You cannot do that, ram it in.
I don't know how you can look at something and like joystick it, like that's just too much.
Yeah. That was so fun.
That was cool.
That was cool.
Skill at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
All right, next up is the COVID funding review for FY '23. Mr. Schuler and Ms. Rader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We'd like to spend just a little time in our program review to speak to just a finance update. Our finance committee did get some of this information a month or so ago at their update. But we just wanted the Board as a whole to get an update in terms of some, where we are financially, and also just a little update on our COVID money, and again, where that has been spent. And yeah, at this point, we'll let Ms. Rader take this next part.
Good evening all. I'm gonna briefly talk about three different areas. The COVID fund review, abatement bond review, and then the Minnesota Legislature, what we know right now. On this screen, we have all of the COVID funds that we've received since 2020 school year. And it is broken out by year, and how much we spent. '23 is what we're predicted to spend, because we're not done with '23. The hope is that all COVID funds will be depleted by the end of the year, is our goal. There's a link at the bottom that goes into a little bit more depth of each COVID fund, and what actually we spent the funds on. Anything that's grayed out is spent down. I'm not gonna go each bucket, but I'll start at the top, and I'll just give a quick recap of the '23 funds that we are spending down. We have Finance 140, and that is K-12 Special Education Funds. So it only can be spent on special education expenses. We're doing some supplies and staffing, miscellaneous supplies and staffing, to spend that down. The Finance 141 is for ages three to six special education. Again, we're using that for staffing and supplies. The next one that we have available for us this year is Finance 160, and this is ARP funds. And currently, it's funding four teachers. Fourth-grade teacher, second-grade teacher, and two, well, actually, it's three positions. That middle school interventionist, we had some employee changes at the last minute, and it's just a little part, one month of one person, and then the remainder of the year for another. So that is three positions. The 161 can only be used for after-school and summer funding. So we are using some right now for after-school activities, or not activities, but services for children that need services after school. And then it's going to be for our June summer school programming. And then 163, again, is only for summer learning. And we are gonna be using that for our June summer school as well. Finance 169 is being used for one teacher and our letters training. We have 48 teachers, is that correct?
Thirty.
All right, I was close. Thirty-eight teachers going through letters training. So that's the cost of their training for that. And then our last COVID fund-related expenses are 171, and that's funding half of our guidance council. So then, if we jump back. The next screen, or the slide shows currently, you heard that there were quite a few positions that are being funded by COVID, and what is our goal for next year, or what is the look like there? The fourth, the fourth-grade teacher will be a reduction for the district. And it's gonna take the place, I mean, it's a high school math position that's being reduced. The second-grade interventionist, something that happened for the '24 school year, and I noticed I have something wrong on there. This last column is the '23-'24 school year. I apologize for that. This year, Department of Health and Minnesota Department of EdFers are lunch programming for Free and Reduced. They made a rule change, and so direct, people that receive Medicaid benefits were automatically directly certified, so they didn't have to fill out an application. So it increased our numbers. And our compensatory, compensatory funds are based on our Free and Reduced. And due to that influx of Free and Reduced students, it makes it so our '24 and '25 compensatory funds increased about $300,000. So that was able to make the district be able to keep some of the integration programming that we had with COVID funds. We're able to keep that because of the additional. We're able to keep that because of the um, additional compensatory funds. So, the second grade interventionist and the middle school interventionist that we paid through S or dollars, we are able to keep those with compensatory in two, in twenty-four. Um, the sixth grade teacher, that was a COVID position, and we are reducing that position, it is coming from the middle school, so we will be having a two-position reduction due to the COVID funds not coming through. And then the high school guidance counselor position that was um, funded by COVID, that is going through the AdSys grant. It was a, well, I shouldn't say that, we haven't gotten um, confirmation that uh, the AdSys grant is approved, but we have written a grant that will include that position. We redid that, so we're able to keep that position as well. So, lot of moving parts, but um, I think if you remember me last year coming here saying we're gonna have some positions that we won't be able to keep because of COVID staffing, this is the effect of it, and it is two positions that we will be um, getting rid of. Any questions on COVID funding?
We should be at all square by the end of the year, at zero, hopefully.
We hope.
We hope.
If everything goes, um, the summer school, they keep extending it, the two summer school pots. If we don't have enough expenditures in June, we might use it for July, so it would go for one more month, but hopefully, by the end of summer, it will be done. And if we don't use it, you guys have to continue your safe school um, COVID funding or plan, so that's the hope to not have to do that.
So when do those COVID funds, when are we forced to use them by?
Oh, why did you ask such a hard question? Um, they keep changing their mind.
They keep pushing it out?
Yes. I think it's twenty-four, September of twenty-four. Some of them do um, sunset September of twenty-three, but we've already spent all of those, so.
So that's the push of getting it done?
Yeah.
Clean break.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. I'm gonna talk now about our abatement bond. Um, back in November, um, we asked, well, we had a resolution that takes a middle school parking lot new entrance, that project, we can abate for, and so we're going to be doing that, and um, there is a link there on this slide that talks about what abatement bonds are, what you can use the funding for, um, by the Department of Ed. So we are going forward on the abatement bonds, and we potentially have three projects that we're going to be funding with it. The middle school, which is the new parking lot entrance, uh, the community learning center. I think you guys remember, we went out for bid way long time ago, they came up really high, so we put it on the back burner. Um, the abatement bond does allow us to do what we were planning on, so we are gonna continue with that project. And then at the elementary school, we're looking at reconfiguring the current parking lot, so drop-off and pickup is a bit easier, um, and it's a little safer. So that's that project, and each of the projects do need to be under two million dollars per building site, and we are adhering to that. So, the next slide sort of goes into a schedule of events, because it's all gonna be taking place beginning next month at the May twenty-second board meeting. Um, with an abatement bond, you do have to have a public hearing, and it's a pretty complex um, deal. Uh, we have to go through all of the parcels in our taxation area and identify the taxes, not taxes, the market value amount of certain parcels, and it has to equal ten percent of our total market value. And that's, that's what we will be abatement bonding on those parcels. So at the public hearing, we have to address them, and um, it's, um, Baker Chili is the one that's helping us with it, and they say that it's really just checking all the boxes. Um, there's nothing that's against those properties, there's nothing held against them, it's just a paper pushing event that has to occur. So, that's what we'll, and you'll get more information on the twenty-second. And then they'll, because we're bonding, we have to do an official statement, which that, the draft will be completed on June seventh. Again, because we're bonding, we have to do a resolution for the tax abatement bonds and the public hearing on June twenty-sixth. And then July sixth, the official statement will be released, we'll have the sale of the bonds on the seventeenth, and then the twenty-fourth, we'll consider the ratification of the resolution on the sale of the bonds, and then the receipt, uh, the proceeds will be receded around August sixteenth. So I just wanted to let you know, you're gonna be hearing about abatement bonds for the next three meetings, um, the last four meetings, this one, so just, if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call, and I can go, go over anything.
So does that mean that those projects for like the CLC and the elementary school then wouldn't be allowed to take place until after this August date?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
So I'm assuming we're looking at summer then of twenty-four?
Almost, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then the last um, topic I wanted to talk about is the legislation update, as we know now, it could change whatever. Um, this is a document that I got through my um, network group, and it's a really good, it'll put you to sleep, but it tells everything that is being considered as of right now. Um, it's very long, sort of boring, but it is what it is. There are two unfunded, well, there's probably more, but two unfunded mandates that we wanted to bring up to you tonight. One is they're proposing unemployment for nine-month employees, which we cannot levy for. Normally, unemployment, we can levy for, so it's not a general expense for the district, but they're not letting us do that. So I estimated it would be about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars if that does pass, and we have people that go on unemployment that are the nine-month employees. So that's something that is a little concerning. And then I'm gonna let Darren talk about the staff, the staffing ratios, which.
Yeah, one of the things is back to the uh, unemployment for nine-month employees. I think the um, there's some clarity coming out even today in terms of what does that really mean, because there's some discussion, if you offer an employee a summer position potentially, and they turn it down, they would be uh, ineligible for the, the benefit, uh, the unemployment benefit. So there's some language now coming out, a little bit of the devil in the details, I guess, is what I think we're trying to gain more information on, and what does that truly look like? Does that include uh, your cafeteria staffs, does it include bus drivers, um, paraprofessionals? I mean, who does it all include? So there's just more information that's coming out each day as that gets, that bill gets refined. Um, staffing ratios, again, is one of those things, um, terms of employment, we talk a lot about terms of employment, and what does that mean? And I, I think right now, the bill that, that's out there is basically saying that it's a negotiable type of item with your bargaining unit, and uh, which, which would be a difficult thing, as we know, you know, uh, if that's a bargained uh, item, um, it has a major impact on our budget, and so if we're looking at getting class sizes down to a bargained number, you know, what does it look like? How does that impact our, our yearly budget? So there's a lot of um, information there that districts are, obviously, us included, um, are concerned about if, if that is a bargained um, item coming through, so. And we know there's another month left in the session, and, and I know a lot of the organizations that, well, Lisa and I belong to, as well as the School Board Association, have some pretty big concerns regarding that, terms of employment, I guess. So, those are the two biggies right now, um, that uh, kind of are at the front and center of what we're thinking at, and then if you do have time, like Lisa said, that document that she provided really does break it down, um, even further into some um, more details, so. Any questions for Lisa or myself?
Does not sound so. All righty, um, moving on to our action items. Action item A, Resolution 2302. Ms. Rader and Mr. Schuler.
So again, um, back in January, um, you approved a resolution to give the administration direction to move forward with recommendations and reductions in terms of programs and staffing. Um, so given what Lisa just shared a few minutes ago, um, there are two positions that we'd be looking to reduce this year, um, one being a, a middle school teacher, one being a high school teacher, again, um, mentioning uh, COVID funding being a part of that. Uh, decline, uh, we've got uh, some declining enrollment as well, um, plays a part into this, um, so at this point, we are recommending that these two positions are not renewed.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2302.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion made by Mr. Phelps and by Ms. Schultz. Um, any further discussion?
Just to clarify, the one high school teacher is a retirement that we are not looking to refill.
Correct, in the math department.
Yes, and the middle school teacher is?
Yeah, so basically, we're, we're changing that STEM program, so we're shifting a teacher out of a classroom into that position, and not rehiring for that position that that teacher is leaving from, so. No one's essentially getting cut, if you will, um, but um, doing some internal shifting and not rehiring.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then from a voting, we, it's a roll call vote, correct?
Correct, yep.
All right, so we're gonna start with the roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Getzko.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Ms. Danielson?
Aye.
Ms. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Phelps?
Aye.
All right, it's uh, six-nothing, the uh, resolution is approved. Moving on to item B, Resolution 2303. Uh, Mr. Schuler.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this resolution, again, is uh, the termination of a non-renewal of teaching staff, and just to clarify, um, this is something that uh, is done annually, although like, last year we haven't had, didn't have the opportunity to do this. Um, so there are four teachers here that we are non-renewing. Uh, the first teacher is a kindergarten teacher, and again, that's due to incoming uh, low enrollment, um, so reducing from five to four sections. Again, there is an opportunity, if our enrollment goes up by the start of the year, I'll be coming back to you and asking you for uh, hiring of that fifth section, so right now, this is just getting that, those sections in line of um, class sizes. So, uh, the other two, um, are, as you can see, are middle school, uh, one's a middle school special ed uh, teacher. Uh, that teacher, uh, was not licensed, and, and you recall back in the fall, we were doing some scrambling in terms of finding special ed teachers, we were not able to find um, a suitable licensed teacher. Um, Mr. Schaefer, in this case, uh, was a paraprofessional with a teaching license. He uh, was kind enough to step into a special ed teacher role for the year, um, and he'll be returning back to his paraprofessional role uh, next fall. So we are just um, terminating that part of his contract, essentially, and we will be reposting that position um, internally and externally as well. Um, Ms. Palmer, we are changing that program, so the computer program in the middle school is being changed over to a, a STEM um, format, uh, practically the way you heard Mr. Gerton talk about uh, at our last meeting. Um, so that position is changed, and the dynamics of the licensure there um, is changing uh, as well, so that position is no longer. Then lastly, uh, Ms. Goodrum, uh, elementary sped teacher, again, not licensed in special education, um, has a minor in special ed, um, but she will be, uh, we're terminating that contract, we have to repost it, again, through uh, state statute. Uh, I know Ms. Goodrum is certainly interested in coming back, and we'll certainly entertain that, but for all extensive purposes, we do have to um, non-renew at this time, so we're asking at this point uh, to non-renew those four teachers listed.
Move approval on Resolution 2303.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Nathan. Um, again, it is another roll call vote, gonna mix up the order here a little bit. Um, Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Ms. Danielson?
Aye.
Ms. Schultz?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Ms. Getzko?
Aye.
Mr. Phelps?
Aye.
Six-nothing, uh, Resolution 2303 passes. Uh, next up is the acknowledgement of donations, contributions, and fundraising. Says Mr. Schuler.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we'd like to uh, recognize three donors uh, this month for donations to our programs. If you'd be so kind, if you'd list those for us?
Yep, so we, we'll greatly accept these pending approval in a few minutes here, um, from Galloping Cabinets for Super Mileage, the American Legion Post 121 for Business Professionals of America, and the Watertown Mayor Education Foundation for the WMES, Young Artist, Young Authors Conference. Is there a motion to approve, or accept the donations, actually?
I will make a motion to approve and accept the contributions, donations.
And I'll second. Have a motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Mr. Phelps. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, and thank you for the donations. Um, next up is the Watertown Mayor Athletic Activity Fee Schedule, twenty-three, twenty-four. Mr. Schuler and Mr. Samansky.
I see Mr. Samansky's on his way up, we just wanna walk you through, again, um, the activity fee schedule, athletic and activity fee schedule for twenty-three, twenty-four. Mr. Samansky.
Uh, yes, we are looking at some minor, minor changes for next year. Uh, for the most part, it's gonna stay the same. We are looking for seeking a minor increase in activity fees for a couple of our activities, and really, the, the main reason for that is we've got a few more students involved in these activities, they're taking a few more bus trips, and it's just a matter of trying to recruit a little bit more money, uh, just to help offset some of the um, costs of transportation and, and judges and, and that type of stuff. The activities involved are mock trials, speech, and knowledge bowl. It's a slight twenty-dollar increase to one hundred dollars, it was at eighty. That's the only change that we're looking at. Um, as far as any comparisons to the conference, uh, Wright County Conference is really all over the board. Some are as high as one twenty-five, some are as low as seventy-five. Uh, some schools put all, any fee that's not an athletic fee is called an activities fee or a fine arts fee, so they, they kind of word it a little bit differently, so sometimes the comparisons are a little bit different. Some schools have, uh, their, their fees are all per activity, one hundred, one hundred, and then the third activity is thirty dollars. So there's all sorts of different things that can be done and are being done. Um, this is the model that we choose, and I think it works very, very well. Wright County Conference East, it's much higher, all the activities and the averages, uh, but you're dealing with bigger schools, and it's a little bit more of a metro area. I was waiting till you take that drink before I stop, so.
Any questions for Mr. Samansky?
I still would like to look at our admission fees. I mean, I know we had talked about this in the past, and we didn't really make any headway on that, but trying to reduce that student ticket price in some capacity. I still think students should be allowed and free, but that might be a pipe dream, I just would like to, yeah. I just think to get a lot more, just student involvement, um, fan involvement, um, that, that school pride, I think. And I, I know it's difficult considering that so many of the surrounding schools also have, you know, student ticket prices about the same, but.
Twenty-some years ago, I think it was about the same for my high school, is what we charge today. Close.
Yeah, I, we got it free if you had a student ID. So we, yeah.
Just a little more perspective on the years, Mr. Burns found a, a graphic from a nineteen ninety um, school. Mr. Burns found a graphic from a 1990 school bulletin newsletter. I was going through it today, and it was $4 for an adult and $1 for a student in 1990, or '89.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, to get in to an activity or event.
Yeah.
Just perspective, but, you know.
What constitutes a student? Like, is there anything...
Depends on who's taking tickets.
Gotcha.
In my mind, a student is K-12, you know, so pre-K is free. You know, we run into some issues. Christmas time, you get the alumni coming back, and I'm a college student, it says "students." You know, our ticket takers do a great job, and if there's ever any doubt or any question, it's usually, yep, pay the student fee and enjoy the game.
Do we track that at all? Do we have any idea how much, what total we collect on the student versus the adult?
We track, you know, student tickets sold and adult tickets sold, per activity. But, you know, a lot of people come in, they've got their family pass, they've got a conference pass, they've got this pass, so really, we can give you the paid attendance on any given activity, we just can't give you the total attendance at that event.
Yeah, well, the paid, I mean, to the question is, you know, how much are we collecting in total on the student fees, and what would be that impact to the budget if we're talking about doing something different there?
Some nights, it's pretty minimal, some nights, it's not. I mean, it's...
So right now, as far as these new fees are concerned, the only one that went up was the mock trial speech knowledgeable, is that...
That is correct.
And that's to help offset transportation, because they are, they're growing in size.
They're growing, yes, yep.
More events.
More events, yeah.
Which is a good problem, but it's still a problem. And when we go down a little bit lower, the admission fees, we just kinda talked about a little bit. You know, it's, there's a conference recommendation, it's seven and five, seven for adult and five for students. It's a recommendation, we don't have to follow that, we choose to follow that. And then sections are different, section sets section rates. Typically, I mean, it's not, I think it's 10 and 5 for the most part. I'm hoping it's not 15 and 10 soon, but who knows? Depends on the section.
Mr. Chair, move approval as presented.
And I'll second that motion. Have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. Phelps. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries. Next up, item E, the Watertown Mayor 2028 Strategic Plan. Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we look to move forward to approve our 2028 strategic plan. Wanted to stop for just a minute and kind of take you back a little bit to how we got to this point tonight. As we remember our strategic roadmap and kind of where we started and where we ended up. Back in October, we sent out a parent survey to actually just parents, staff, and students, gaining input on the strategic plan and what was good and what needed to be improved with our current and what they're looking for in their new plan. In October of 2027, we had a training where Bruce Miles from Big River Consulting came and trained us, I guess trained us virtually. All our administrators were trained on that particular day. And then we kind of brought, went out and visited with all of our staff in each of the buildings in terms of what they were looking for, and got some really good feedback along the way. November 15th, we had a dinner and input session with our community. I think we had about 15 to 20 parents attend that night, and again, got some really good impact on some things that we were doing well, things that they'd like to see us continue to improve on, so very beneficial. If you recall, back in January, we moved into a work session after our regular, special meeting, excuse me, and had an opportunity to get Bruce in as well and walk us through the same process that the staff went through and the parents went through, and kind of looking for those priorities as we move forward. In January, then, we came and did our first read. And February was hope, we were hoping to get our final read in, but we did some revisions. And most recently, we met with our marketing and communications group. They got their eyes on the new plan as well and gave some input. So it's been a really good process. Again, I really wanna thank our admin team for their help in navigating this, certainly Heather Hewen as well, some of the behind-the-scenes work that she was doing in terms of gathering all that information. And then Bruce Miles and his assistant for compiling the information, again, boiling it down, and getting it to a workable document. So with that being said, it kind of goes to our last step of just reviewing kind of where we left our strategic plan and moving into next year. I will add, the only thing that really changed with the marketing and communications group was that this term, instead of benchmarks, the term striving to achieve, and I think that resonated really well with that group rather than just benchmarks. I think most of the folks who would read this on the street would say, well, I really don't know what a benchmark is, that's kind of school terminology, if you will. But I think everybody knows, you know, what striving to achieve means and how you get there, so I think that was one takeaway that we had, so we added that. Again, we wanna thank Robin Behrens for her work in putting together a really nice infographic. So again, our strategic commitments are the learner outcomes, financial stewardship, our profile of a graduate, partnerships with our community, all means all, people in our community and the culture and our staff, and then a communication piece as well. And as we've talked about, those striving to achieve, the things that we'll be working for are, as we call them, our benchmarks. The first one is all students exhibit physical, social, emotional well-being and feel connected to their school. And again, we've talked a lot about what that looks like in terms of a measurement tool. Last few weeks, we've been meeting with different vendors on this type of survey data. One of the things that, one of the things we're finding is the price point is pretty high, and when we're looking at probably three different surveys, a parent survey each year, a student survey, and also a staff culture survey, I guess we're kind of questioning whether or not we wanna spend the money to do that through a vendor, or we just do it on our own. You know, when you get a vendor to do it, you get a really nice compiled report, but I think we can do something pretty similar, at least in year one, and I guess if the board feels at that point, hey, we can do better, we wanna see better in terms of the look of it, we can certainly do that. But I think the more we talk, and actually, we're talking about it again tomorrow administratively, you know, I think we can do it through a Google Form probably and get, you know, the results that we need. So what we'll be looking at probably in terms of the student piece is probably a 15-question type format, a survey, if you will, trying to gauge where students are at, physically, emotionally, and socially. And number two, all employees report satisfaction in the workplace, again, that's kind of that culture survey. How are people feeling about coming to work every day, essentially? In the same type of format, we use a survey of about 10 to 15 questions, probably do that in the spring of each year, one time a year, and get a benchmark on where we're at there. Number three, the district maintains an annual fund balance aligned to policy, and again, that'll be obviously shown through our unsigned fund balance each year and aligning that to our policy. Number four, community education provides a high quality and interest-based learning opportunities for our community, and this was started already. Ms. Dimmler's done a really nice job of gathering the data of how many hours of instruction, how many instructors do we have, how many people are participating. We're gonna be able to gather some really good information there and share it out with our community and you as the board. Number five, all students are at grade level in reading and math by the end of the year, again, in third grade, excuse me. That is MCA data that we'll be able to use, as well as some of our FAST data, so we'll be able to report back on that. Number six, all students graduate from high school with a plan to meet their full potential. Again, Mr. Henon does a really nice job each year of surveying our seniors, and we'll probably add to that even. I think he does a simple four or five questions, but we'll probably add a little bit to that, a little more meat on the bone, but just really getting some good feedback from our seniors as they're moving on to their next step in their journey. Number seven, all children are ready for kindergarten. Again, we have some really good models that we use currently in our preschool setting to kind of tell us where our kids are at coming into kindergarten, so some spring data that we'll get from our preschoolers. Again, unfortunately, it's probably just gonna be our preschoolers that are in our preschool programming. Not all the kindergartners coming in, but it gives us a one-nice data point there. And then lastly, all parents report satisfaction with their children's educational experience, and again, another survey, probably in the spring of each year, 10 to 15 questions of just asking parents, tell us a little bit more about your experience and your child's experience at Watertown Mayor. So we're really confident that we can grab some really good data and measure these goals, and that's what we're tasked to do, so... Any questions?
Forward-thinking, have we thought about how we're going to be transparent about those measurements?
Yeah, great point.
So it's not just at our level, it's not just at the administration level? I think that's something we need bigger.
Yeah, we're excited too with our new website coming on next fall, hopefully next fall. We'll have a dedicated page that will really show those pieces, and obviously, being able to put that into a newsletter or a royal roundup will put the community to see exactly where we landed and being able to see that visually, so that's an exciting piece too. It's a good transition with the new website coming on to be able to do that, so...
Mr. Schuler, if we're gonna build the survey, the surveying capabilities internally, are we gonna get some assistance in what those questions should be that are...
Yeah.
You know, like what you might find in a Gallup survey, for instance, in a workplace, or for employee satisfaction, or...
The one nice thing is a lot of those surveys that we've seen from other districts that are paying for them, it's pretty much open source, so you got an opportunity to bank, steal, and borrow. Careful what I say. But, you know, we're gonna sit down amongst our admin team and really highlight what are the questions that we wanna ask, and certainly welcome the board to weigh in on that too, once we get kind of a rough draft, and you can see if you're thinking the same thing. But I think the one thing we know is we gotta keep it fairly short, and the parents and students and staff all get tired of surveys if they're long. We wanna get it to, like I said, a 10 to 15 question sweet spot where it's manageable but yet meaningful, so...
I make a motion to approve the 2028 strategic plan.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? I just wanna say thanks to everyone who gave all their input, you know, whether it's the faculty, the staff, parents, you know, students, everybody that kind of had their input on this, 'cause it's bigger than just the seven of us. You know, it's where we want the district to be when we're either still on the board or no longer on the board. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries.
Do we plan on posting these at all the school sites as well?
Yeah, we're...
Be visible?
We're working on how we post them in offices and certainly smaller versions in classrooms like the previous one was, but working on that as well for a fall rollout when school starts.
Moving on to the review and information items, Bond Referendum Project update. Mr. Schuler and Mr. Reer.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Chris Reer, for anybody that doesn't know me, I am the new Chris Vogel. He's gone. He left, so... But I'll be, you'll be seeing me from here on out until we kind of get everything wrapped up. It's funny, 'cause was it two and a half years ago?
Yeah.
I was here?
Yep.
That long? It's just a long circuit.
It's pretty long.
This is like Hotel California.
Is that good or bad?
Once you get here, you can never leave.
Well, that's okay. So I'll provide a quick update from a high level. All the projects are essentially enclosed out right now. I think we're aware of that, but as far as the middle school, high school, pardon me, warranty claim on the marmolium, that's the sheet flooring, that's still a work in progress. We are exploring conversations with the contractor, exploring options, but the carpeting is, is it no contest for replacement? And in fact, they confirmed that we're replacing room 148 next weekend. It's kind of a test. They're gonna install it a different way, and we'll get some traffic on it and see how it holds up. If it holds up well, then they'll be doing the balance over the summer, but we're just gonna do one right now and see how that shakes out. Worst-case scenario, if it doesn't hold up, then we'll look at something else, but the, both the contractor and the manufacturer are saying, yes, this is definitely warranty claim, so there's no issues there. Marmolium, still ongoing. For the most part, though, the high school punch items are pretty much wrapped up. Locker rooms, really, we have two punch items remaining, and that would be the painting, which the contractor has acknowledged needs to be finished. It's a matter of scheduling that, because there's a lot of painting to do in both locker rooms, so we're just trying to find time that will be not invasive to users. In all honesty, we're probably looking at when school's out, that way we don't have to do some starts and stops in case of that nature. Same thing to be said for the epoxy walls and floors. We did have one shower that we took down, and if you get a chance, take a look at it, or maybe we should try to send out a picture of it. Looks great, it's just a matter, it took two weeks, and it was kind of outside the scope of how we corrected it, so we know what the end result needs to be, that it can be done. We're discussing it with the prime contractor on trying to find the best solution to get that result. Either way, again, probably in like June to get those done. The epoxy itself isn't like, it's a low VOC product, it's sanding that down, it gets a little messy, so we wanna avoid conflict with the users, but we've got a path forward on both, so that's good. Onto the site improvements and both the state, two different contractors, but essentially the same issues. We have to finish the punch list, and there's landscaping, and both contractors, for both contracts, have confirmed, we're looking at about a mid-May start, weather contingent, of course, but landscaping and those punch lists. So no contentions from either contractor there, it's just trying to find the timeframe to get in and get some stuff done. I mean, typically, we would be doing that right now, whether just, this year, weather just didn't allow it, so it's on the radar. Greenhouse, we've got the structural plans complete, we're gonna be submitting those, excuse me, we're gonna be submitting for a plan review permit this week, but we do anticipate early summer construction. I wish I could give you like a timeframe specific, but we're kind of at the whim of that fabrication. I do know the fabrication has been started by the greenhouse contractor. They have not told us any different than that early summer start, I believe around schedule. They've been very communicative with any sort of delays that they're experiencing, so I don't see an issue, but we'll keep this board updated. Storage building, we did submit the permit application, we did get some comments back from the plan reviewer. We had a different interpretation, we had a meeting with city administration and again with the plan reviewer. We found a solution. We had confirmation just this morning, in fact, on the solution that is acceptable, so we're in the process of resubmitting, maybe about six weeks. Shouldn't affect our date, though, as far as that July-August is what we're looking for, so it is quite possible that the greenhouse and storage building could be concurrent. Hopefully, they overlap, but we're still looking at this summer, we're both in. Before we talk about the budget, any questions on those updates?
For the field, I know you said...
For the field, I know you said mid-May. Will the seniors be able to hopefully use the field to receive their diplomas or?
The turf? Yeah, what we're talking about is, the field is, is usable and so is the track and the stadium. We're talking about some punch list items that need to be corrected. But, most importantly for that contract is the landscaping. There's still some landscaping that needs to be completed. And there's some landscaping that went in last year that didn't take. I think we had a couple number of trees that died or, you know, things of that nature. So, from the landscape, the things that, the landscaping that went in is a warranty item. They're going to be corrected. But, there were a few other landscaping issues that they didn't get to last year that need to be corrected. Some sods and that one, things like that. But, it won't affect the usage of the actual field.
What about that outfield fence for softball?
We have a temp fence up now.
Yep.
I got to get them back out and straighten that up a little bit. They kind of threw that in.
Yep.
So, I've got to call into Peterson's fencing division. They're a prime contractor.
Okay.
Trying to get them back out and get that resolved. And then we're looking at permanent installation in June.
Mid-June.
Mid-June, because that's going to hit summer too. That's why I'm asking.
Yep.
That's, okay.
When we started down that path, we were looking at a couple days is what we were quoted. And then all of a sudden they come back and they're, well, this, this, it was a week and a half, two weeks. And it really started interfering with game schedules.
Yep.
So, that's why we have that temp up now. It's, it's not ideal, but it provides some solution.
Something, right.
But, in order to give them the window that they need, we're going to be after that season.
Problem is too, we didn't want to get pushed out to the fall again and lose our slot. So, we wanted to get the high school season in on a field, on their home field, if you will, and then maybe make some concessions with the summer softball season. But, just again, staying on that, it was frustrating not getting it done in the fall because we, you know, just didn't, snow came a little early and they weren't able to, to complete it. So, it was kind of one of those tough decisions where we just felt like, let's get it done as soon as we can.
Yeah, they couldn't give us the window we needed now, this early.
Would it be bad to push it out till end of July, August? Because then there's not, not any games being played there. You just don't risk.
The risk we face there is all the other schools and things like that trying to get their work in.
Got it.
In that August window. Now, we're competing with them. It's definitely a conversation we can have. But, right now, we're going to hold that June window and then we can hopefully work with them a little bit.
How many days of installation does that usually take? I mean, I can't assume if you have enough worker, I mean, you need enough workers, right?
It varies. With that fence, because we, I think there's still a little, some of it that has to actually still come out. It's in right now. There's some that have to come out so they can put the new fence in. I mean, you would expect a week or less, but honestly, I can't speak to the manpower. Everybody's issuing, experienced manpower issues. That was part of the reason they gave us early on was they didn't have enough manpower for it.
Yeah.
Because this is their slow time. So, unfortunately, we're still battling those types of issues.
Right.
So, any other questions on the constructions?
No.
Okay. Budget, I, I did reference back to the budget Mr. Vogel presented and we've got minor change right now. You can see cost complete about a half a million. So, that last half a million is, is, it's going to take a little while. It's a lot of its retention that get paid, gets paid out as punch list things are then finalized. A few bucks in there for greenhouse as it goes. But, so, you'll see, that'll slowly dwindle down over the next three to four months. Unless you want to add to it.
If you can find more money.
Any questions on the budget?
No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, for coming.
Last on the review and information items, a notice of desire to negotiate. The board's been advised that Education Minnesota, which represents the educational support paraprofessionals, has requested to enter into contract negotiations. So, Personnel Committee, you can add that one to your to-do list as well. Alrighty. Now, up for the administrative reports, starting off with Mr. Henon.
Good evening. Few things before I know it. Talk about the profile graduate that he is projecting. Obviously, next month is a pretty busy month of high school. Prompts coming up this weekend. Senior athletic banquet's May 3rd. We have the senior award of scholarship night, May 10th. I think we had 87 kids apply for scholarships this year, which is by far and away the most. I think usually if we had 50 to 60. So, that, you know, again, we really encourage them and, and we have a lot more available to them, a lot more types. So, that was great to see. Then obviously graduation is May 26th and plans are, are moving with that. You know, now it's a point, I mean, we think we've got some logistics figured out, but just, it's all the details, just, you know, making sure we have the right chairs and things like that, that, you know, we just don't have everything on here. But, we'll find a way to get them. And then just want to publicly acknowledge, on Wednesday this week, we have a Students of Excellence banquet in St. Cloud. Every year, we get to pick four students to go up to St. Cloud and, and there's like 40 schools in central Minnesota who get to send kids up. And again, just get recognized at a banquet. And our staff gets input on this. It's not an easy decision because we have a lot more than four kids who are deserving, obviously every year. But, this year, the four that were chosen were Wyatt McCabe, Albert Rundell, Sophia Oskerson and Giulia Otto. So, again, it's nice that Darren usually comes with me up there. Again, it's usually, it's just a nice banquet and a chance for these kids to get recognized for their accomplishments. And then lastly, the profile of a graduate is something we've been working on for a few months now with, started with the high school staff. And there was a group of about 10 staff members that, that started with this committee. And, and what we've done over the last few months, we've met with all the different buildings or got input from them just about, again, what they thought should be changed, what they thought should be updated, just some general feedback. And again, partly it was done five years ago and we felt like a lot has changed in five years. Not in COVID, obviously, but just a lot of things in general with educational trends and workplace trends have changed. We met with the Chamber of Commerce, what about a month ago, Darren, I think as well. We had a really good meeting with them. And we got a lot of really good feedback, but the one thing we, we were missing was kids. So, this past, this last week, I met with three different groups of students, one group from 10th grade, one 11th and one 12th, and gave them a draft and just said, what is your feedback? And, and honestly, probably of all the different meetings, that might have been the most beneficial. It was really interesting to, maybe it's because I bribed them with donuts maybe and that helped, but I said, only after you give me good feedback. But, they really did give some really, really good feedback. And, and their perspectives were just about, you know, they said, you know, they, for example, looked at some of the descriptors and just said, we don't really even understand what that means. Because it wasn't in kid language. It was just simple. They said, just make it simple for us. And obviously, there's a lot more than just six characteristics of a profile graduate we want. But, eventually, we just felt like we got to pick a number and, and work around that. The six that we've identified are creative and critical thinker, skilled communicator, effective collaborator, healthy individual, engaged community member and self-motivated learner. The first one, creative and critical thinker, again, it's really with problem solving. And then actually what came out with the kids was this idea of adaptability. And just be able to think in different ways and, and again, being able to reach and analyzing like conclusion, analyzing social media. Like one of them pointed out, like, we need to realize like what's garbage on social media and what's actually true. Skilled communicator, and again, there's a lot of just, this was obviously about, you know, understanding diversity, you know, diverse perspectives, but about, again, being able to communicate in different ways, whether it's a job interview or giving a presentation to a group of people, or just being able to communicate with people in general. Collaborator was one that is a new one. And this came about because I think all the groups talked about, we just, we need to be able to work with people. And again, that could come in a variety of different ways, being able to listen. But, again, this is where the kid, the student feedback was really beneficial because like they talked about, you know, just, again, being able to do what your assigned job in a group is. You know, being able to follow through on your task, being able to offer ideas, but then also to validate other group, other people's ideas. And that doesn't mean that you have to agree with them, but just listen, actually. And it's okay to even disagree as part of being a collaborator. Healthy individual is also a new one. And again, this isn't just a physical, it's not like a physical healthiness. Like, you know, one kid put it best when I was a 10th grader. He said, you know, part of what we need to learn in schools is how to balance that, you know, there's an educational component of what we do, but then just being able to, to live, you know, happily and balance what we do in school and outside of school. And, because he goes, that's what you have to do when you get out of here, is have that work-life balance. And, and then the other part that came about is this idea of self-awareness. Knowing what you're good at, knowing what you need to keep working at to get better. And, and that's, you know, they said, something you have to do when you get older, but it's something we want our kids to learn even right now. So, again, they, they really do understand what, what their strengths and then areas of growth are. Engaged community member was, we went back and forth in this wording, but again, what we kind of talked about was just the idea that, you know, community can imply your workplace, it can imply school, it could imply that, you know, the actual place you live. But, just, because again, like some said, we're not going to maybe live here our whole life. We maybe not, we may not go to school. But, they talked about volunteering a lot. And again, just this idea of empathy and support for others. And again, just, you know, like Darren and I talked about, you know, it's, volunteering is just something that more and more, you know, whether it's adults or kids, that's something we want people to do. Helping each other out, just a simple thing like that, but that's what we want from our kids. And then last, yes, self-motivated learner. And again, the, the feedback we got to see, you know, with the first one is just actively engaging with tasks, managing time and meeting deadlines. They said, you know, when we go to the workplace, we have to do these things. So, that's a, that's being self-motivated, do them when you're not going to have your parents tell you what to do all the time. How do we learn those things? And again, work to your potential and then recognize the setbacks and challenges and learning opportunity. So, obviously, this is just the draft. It'll go into it and it'll be, you know, obviously when it goes to the designer, it'll look nice graphic and everything. But, you know, there's more obviously that, you know, we'll have. But, you know, I think this was a balance that what, what we wanted to get was a balance of not just academic skills, but the skills you'll need to be successful, whether you're going to go to college, work, you know, ain't really anything, because that's really the ultimate goal. Because, you know, one of the examples I gave the kids is, we have some kids who do really well in school, but may struggle at a workplace. So, it's not just about, again, those academic components. But, I mean, there was a lot of people we got feedback from and I do have to, I mean, we had a group of teachers who really helped. Jen Pepperdiss and Chris Fiskus from the high school did a lot of work on this, where they took all the feedback. I think we had 100 pages of feedback from students, came back, did all, they had all the staff feedback and came back. And then this is what they refined it to look like this. So, that's kind of where we're at, we're at right now. And, and again, hoping to finalize in the next few weeks and then bring it back for a final approval next month.
I think it looks amazing. I mean, really, really positive, but also just like it's going to grow some pretty good humans.
I would just add too, and I can thank you, Mr. Henon, for his leadership on this and, and Ms. Fiskus, Ms. Pepperdiss. I, I, you mentioned the student feedback. I, I would say the, the chamber meeting we went to a month ago, you know, chamber meetings can tend to be a little, you know, not real lively. But, that was the most engaged I've seen. I think Amy Dibler's nodding her head. The most engaged I saw that, that chamber group in the three years that I've been on the chamber. And just really bringing up some great points. And, and even some of the folks that are on the, on the chamber who have our students working for them, brought some really good examples of just things that they're doing to promote just work ethic and day-to-day understanding of, this is how you do a check, how you do a check. But, we don't see checkbooks anymore. But, you know, those are simple things that a lot of our, our chamber members have relationships with the workers that are in our schools, kids that are working, which is pretty cool too. So, great conduit to get some really good feedback.
I think the last one was a lot of, I know, not to be critical, but it was very much a lot of education jargon.
Yeah.
Where the goal of this, only do I want to just make it very clear where, again, people could understand it, but especially like our, our students can even understand it. So, they go to read and go, this is, I know what this means.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, our plan would be to get this into a final draft for the board to review at the May meeting for your approval. Like I said, Robin Behrens takes the design. She did the previous design. We'll do a similar design that kind of matches up with our new strategic plan. So, you can, you'll kind of see a conduit there as well. So, we hope to bring that in, in May here, wrap that up. So.
Fantastic. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Girdon.
Good evening. Sometimes feels like it takes forever to get to spring and now it's almost May. So, things are just kind of flying along here. But, it's exciting. First off, our fifth graders are coming to see us. Our fourth graders, excuse me, are coming to see us next week. Tour the middle school to get ready for next year. And then we'll be having a parent informational meeting for parents of incoming fifth graders in May, May 11th, actually. Sixth through eighth grade registration is completed. That went really smoothly staffing-wise to kind of get us ready. It took us a year, but we filled that seventh grade science position with a qualified candidate. I think we found it an exceptional teacher. Her name is Paige Wazerek. I might be mispronouncing that. She's currently teaching high school biology over in Howard Lake, Waverly-Winstead. So, she'll be joining us next fall. As Mr. Schuler had mentioned, we hired a STEM teacher, Melinda Young, who has been a math teacher in our building for three years. Fantastic teacher, really has that engineering mind. We interviewed her and it was just very obvious. So, she'll be launching STEM for us. We're still in search of a secretary and a middle school social worker or counselor. But, I have a faith in knowing that we're out in front. In terms of the hiring right now, we're still in April. So, I, I think we're going to do good there. We have good candidate pool coming in. So, we'll keep you posted there. And then last piece is just the master schedule. It's not quite done. There is a little bit of finessing to do to respond to no longer getting those COVID dollars that Mrs. Raeder had mentioned. But, it's pretty close to being done. So, we're, we're nearing, nearing that point where I'm ready to share it with staff. MCA testing started two weeks ago. That has gone very smoothly in the middle school. I'm really impressed with the kids and just really working hard, taking it seriously. We completed math and reading. We have some makeups to take care of this week and next week. And then we'll take care of science next week and hopefully be finished with MCA testing in early May. Couple of other things here. I want to just recognize the Watertomer Educational Foundation. They donated $1,800 to help us launch STEM. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Really appreciate that. And lastly, as I said, it's, we're kind of heading into May. It just gets really busy, especially if you're a parent. We have, we have an activity night coming up this week for our fifth and sixth graders. We have two band concerts coming up a week from now, two choir concerts the following week. Our eighth grade graduation party is May 30th. And then we'll have a whole school year of an royal assembly on May 31st. And then June 2nd, we wrap up the school year. So, there you go. Any questions, comments from anybody?
So, Melinda, Mrs. Young's position, does that mean you'll be replacing like a seventh grade teacher, a math teacher? Or is that totally shifting to like a STEM?
So, she shifts to a STEM position with the exception of one period that she teaches seventh grade math. And then fortunately, in the schedule, we're able to use one of our sixth and one of our eighth grade math teachers to do some backfilling in seventh grade. We end up with three sections in seventh grade.
Got it.
So, it worked out really well. So, that's how that's, that's starting to play out. So, yeah, we will not have to replace her with a math teacher. So, yeah.
Cool.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Connell.
Good evening. We're still continuing our efforts to register our kindergarten students. As you heard, we don't have enough for the five sections. As of April 17th, we had 68 who were officially registered, seven who started their application but have not finalized or submitted it, and 12 who have verbally committed. So, if you count those things in, we're at 89. We can't really count on that or bank on that, of course, though, until they're fully registered. So, we're continuing to make phone calls. Our kindergarten team has been thinking about yard signs. So, we've kind of been designing possible options for those as well. Our reading MCAs were taken last week with our third and fourth graders. We have a few students who are still finishing those due to absences. Then we have our math MCAs scheduled for tomorrow and Wednesday of this week. We've really been trying to pump them up with our school messaging of knowing your impact and flipping the triangle. One, two students actually went to the front office last week and told my office staff that their wacky principal was out there again, because those mornings I've stood at the top of the stairs with a big boombox blasting like Eye of the Tiger and giving them all this bump and saying, go slow, take your time. You know this, you've got this. We're also continuing to work on knowing our impact through our PLCs and our efficacy cycles, those six-week cycles that we've been doing. So, we are seeing that, looks like we're going to be flipping that triangle when all the data comes in. We held our final royal recognition all-school assembly this past Friday to recognize students who did a great job living out their royal expectations of being caring, safe problem solvers. of being caring, safe problem solvers this past week. We also took that opportunity as a whole school to sing our theme song for the year. So there is over five hundred kids singing, did you see it? Singing Van Halen right now. Um, we had two fourth graders who would hold up big signs that said, right now. Um, so the little ones knew when to sing that part. And one of them even improvised an air guitar with the song, with the sign, um, during that part. So it was kind of fun to see them come to life and all the kids singing it. Um, the culminating activity was having students exit the gym. Um, singing an affirmation of I think I can, that was set to a song from the nineties that I remixed of the Quad City DJs, Come on Ride It, The Train. Uh, where we just took the chorus and put it on. So they just kept singing, I think I can, I think I can. Um, so it was really fun. They've been singing it all week long. Um, since then, I heard from a lot of parents that they were hearing both of those songs at their house this weekend. But fun just to have kids kind of partaking in, knowing their impact and knowing what we're working on. And then we have our staff connection challenge that we have every month. Um, this one was a month long one that's still going on where we have um, staff who submitted videos. There's twenty-six of them who participated, who submitted an under two minute talent video. And every day in the morning announcements, there's two staff paired up against one another. And then at lunch, the students vote for who moves on to the next round. So it's been kind of fun just to, they're adding points to their team that they've been working on all year. But it's also fun just to see the kids get so excited about it and see them try and process who should get their vote that day. Um, the talents are very different. We've seen a lot of different sides of staff that we haven't seen before, um, which is fun. Um, and then our Strides for Students event is going on where we're raising money in preparation of that event, which is on May 6th. As of today, we have raised seven thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-one cents. Our goal is twenty-two thousand dollars and we still have two weeks to go. So we're hoping that that reach our goal. Yeah.
So you want to donate? How do you donate to Strides for Students?
The kids call you. The kids call you.
Yep. Some have posted videos or their parents have on Facebook that have gotten a lot of traction. That's how our top earner right now has gotten the money. Um, we've put in videos that student council has made into the morning announcements, kind of reminding people of how to do it. And then in our main hallway, we have kind of a graphic of a little, uh, bar chart with crowns indicating which class is in the lead and where the money stands. And then we put on announcements each week that not only are your staff competing, but you're competing too. So um, we've got some fun ideas in store for the highest earning kids and the highest earning classes. Um, and we're going to let the kids vote on what happens at our assembly where we celebrate it. Not going to share any of the ideas we have in case teachers are listening, but the kids are going to be voting on what happens to teachers at that assembly. So.
There's still the silent auction piece to that, correct? Or an auction piece to that?
Yep. Yep.
There's that as well.
Any questions?
Ms. Dibler.
Hello. Good evening. I don't think we're having quite as much fun at the CLC. Um, I am really excited. Our summer catalog, which has been out for almost a month now, our registration's been open. And we are almost pre kind of pandemic numbers for enrollment for our summer, um, activities. So that is just so much fun to, to see. Um, we are kind of going past summer and thinking about fall already. We are taking proposals for our fall classes. Um, and we will be putting our book together, um, mid-June and have it out by the end of July. So it's kind of where we're starting to think is fall. Um, in terms of our childcare and our early childhood, um, our numbers are still coming in. We're at about ninety-three for preschool for next fall. Uh, for this summer, we have over a hundred and sixty-one kids in childcare and about a hundred and thirty next, uh, fall for the school, school year. Um, so this year we end on June 2nd, the last day of school. Um, childcare will be closed for two days and then reopening on the 7th. And we are offering for any staff, um, who do need childcare on the 7th, a special, uh, staff rate for that one day. Um, our summer program opens June 7th through August 25th. And like I said, our numbers are really, again, pre-COVID numbers for our, our summer program. Uh, for our early childhood, our ECFE and Young Royals programs are wrapping up in May. And we have a fun kickoff event on Wednesday, June 24th, that everybody is invited to, a free event, ice cream. Sample. Um, we do, we, uh, right now have a spring fling, our mini prom, uh, scheduled for Saturday. Enrollment's been really low for that. So we're kind of waiting till Wednesday to see if we can get enough, uh, to run that. And that is what's going on at the CLC. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I have a couple of things I'd like to get you updated on. You've heard, um, a little bit about our MCAs. Oh, by the way, um, somebody was saying how quickly things are going. Four more Mondays left if you're counting. Four more Mondays.
Wow.
Yeah, sorry. Anyway, uh, MCA updates. Just one of the things that we had our TLC, TLAC meeting last week and we tried to really emphasize, uh, the importance of taking MCAs and try to get that out with our community members and push that out. Uh, so just to reiterate that, uh, the more kids that we can have, uh, have taking that test, the more we can start to get them to take that test seriously and do the best job that they can, the better, more confident we can be in the results and, uh, use those to make decisions because we do use that as one marker for, uh, you know, accelerated classes, for, uh, needing additional supports. Uh, so we just want to make sure to get that out there. Also, parents might, uh, may be interested because, um, you know, that's the one data point that's out there. And when people are home, house shopping and town hunting, it's going to be one of the things that they're uh, going to be looking at and for. So we want to put the best foot forward that we can. Uh, that said, um, you heard about all the testing that's going on. Uh, so far, um, we haven't had nine hundred students test yet, but of the about nine hundred students that are going to be testing, we've had thirty-six opt-outs. So that's about three percent. So, you know, we think we could bump all our scores up three percent. That'd be really nice. So, uh, there again, we want to get as many people as we can to, uh, to take, to take that test. Many of those, I believe, uh, most of them, I think there's eight in tenth grade and twelve and eleventh grade. So a lot of them are out of the high school. Uh, the, the eighth grade had a lot of opt-out uh, students as well. Uh, but just to kind of keep you over there then and how we're going to try to keep promoting that, yet we want everybody to take it. Cause, um, that gives us some valuable information, um, as a school also. Um, Nick mentioned that, um, the testing has gone on in the middle school. Uh, and it has, we're, we're completed with the scheduled testing dates, but we've got makeups. And I think, you know, our staff is doing an awesome job of working with our kids to take, have them take it seriously. We still have fifty kids to finish the reading and sixty kids to finish the math. So, uh, Ms. Young was saying she encouraged them to go slow, but not that slow. So. But yeah, so there, so you know, I, I've got some summary information that we can't share until the end of August anyway, but with a hundred and ten kids still to finish, it's going to fluctuate quite a bit. So, uh, we'll be looking at that though, as they, as they kind of come down the pipe. Uh, and then we'll be, um, looking at MCA science testing to wrap up that first and second week in May. Uh, curriculum update, as I mentioned earlier, we did have our, uh, TLAC, that's Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee, uh, meet last week. Uh, we had, um, the science team kind of, uh, put forth their proposal. Uh, they've chosen to look, uh, at and purchase Sabbath curriculum in both biology and in chemistry. And I've also believe that's the anatomy and physiology, which is what is used for that college in the school class. So, um, I didn't see that there's a link to that, um, minute, but if you guys want to share with the board, there's links to the websites. If you're curious about those, um, we'll be asking for, uh, board approval at our next meeting for that. And in the meantime, also we'll be looking at, uh, some, uh, language arts purchases that we'll ask the board to approve at our next meeting as well. Uh, turn it in seems to be kind of a, a decision that's been made. And basically what turn it in is it's a software package that looks to, uh, you kind of use that and use that as your screener or your scanner, and it'll tell you whether or not, uh, any of that's been plagiarized. So it kind of gives you an idea. And I believe they're even working to have that detect if it will find AI generated materials as well. So they weren't there at that time, at the time we had a presentation, but they said they're working on it. So, uh, which is a good thing. Uh, and then we're working on with vendors on IXL and how we can maybe use that as grammar. Cause again, that was one of our low areas in, in the high school and areas that we could bolster with also the possibility of maybe study sync at our ELA nine and ELA 10. We'll see how all the budget things fit together. Um, I've told that committee that once we get all that information and make our decisions, I'll be asking them via email, I'll be sending out to get them to vote to, to recommend that you approve those purchases. And we'll talk about that again in May. Questions?
Mr. Vio, um, when we have people that opt out of MCAs, what's the most common reason to opt out?
Um, there's probably, there's probably two common reasons. One of them is test anxiety. I've heard that several times this year. Uh, and the other one is I don't believe in testing, whatever that means. They, they don't see the value in it for them personally, I guess.
And do those opt-outs, you, do those count negatively in our scores then, or?
It depends, but yes, it does. If you just look at the way they report proficiency rates on their website, you can go through and filter out and just select students that tested so that you can get that more accurate piece of information. But when MDE would look at it and say, oh, you're, you're not making the grade, you're going to be put on special assignment, if you will. They consider those as not proficient.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Most of the time when I report out, I'll be reporting out on, you know, butts in seats and kids taking tests. So.
And for the anxiety, um, people, is there a way that, um, we could make it so they're not anxious? I mean, I, I know I was a parent a couple of years ago, just for a couple of months. And I found it amazing that for some kids that didn't do well in testing area, they were able to go in a different room, put headset or put, listen to music, whatnot, so that they can relax and take their test and not be rushed and have people around writing in their like, just fidgeting.
You know, and we've got small group opportunities for kids. So, you know, we kind of pride ourselves on knowing kids real well. And so for certain, we'll be pulling IEP kids out and, and other students out that might need, see that as an advantage. Uh, so we would certainly do that. By the time I get that information, the parent has already made up their decision. So it's kind of, you know, we could maybe promote that on the front side. The other thing we're encouraging staff members is to just tell kids to do the best they can do. It's, we don't want it to be a pressure situation. We just want them to put their best foot forward. That, that's all we ask. So I don't know if that helps or not, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gronsa.
Hi. Good evening. And so let's see. Um, so for special education, we're, um, working on staffing for next year. So we've had some movement within our current special ed staff, taking different positions and moving them around to meet student needs. Um, so that has made us have an opening, for example, with our evaluation coordinator. We still have a psychologist posting. Um, we do have a plan though, that we would be working, um, contracting with a company for a school psychologist if we weren't able to hire our own. And I think that's the road we're going to go down. And it is someone that we're currently contracting with who doesn't live that far away. He lives under an hour away. So he's willing to come in and work, um, on site a couple of days a week, and then also allowing him to do remote work. Um, just due to his family needs. So we do have a nice plan for that. Um, you've also seen that, um, under the personnel action information, we had one of our speech language pathologists resign from the elementary school. So that position is posted. And then we're also still working on staffing for extended school year for the summer. So we still need a couple of teachers and we need some parents. But you know, it's not unusual for this time of the year to still be tapping people on the shoulder and asking them if they're interested in working this summer. Um, so you all know that Randy Peyton has been hired as the director of special ed for next year. So she and I have been emailing and she's just been really, she's I, she's so excited and lots of exclamation points in her emails. So, um, because she's working, her contract with their current school district will end, you know, the beginning of June. Um, she and I, she'll be coming and we'll be meeting a couple of times in June so that we can really like, I can share information. We can have a smooth transition. So I'm looking forward to that. And I really enjoyed being able to meet all three candidates on the tour. So it's, it was nice to set, establish that initial connection. So then when we have these transition days, um, they can be very purposeful. So that's good. Um, for our reading interventions, um, you may remember Joe and I talking maybe last year about this, that we were having some of our teachers go through. It's a reading intervention program called SON Day, like S-O-N Day. And, um, it's very, it's a research-based, highly effective reading intervention, um, program. And so we had some, um, our reading intervention is at the elementary school, go through the training last summer. And one of our special education teachers and I'm looking at having three of our, um, two elementary and one, at least one, maybe two of the middle school teachers going through that training this summer. Um, because I, you've probably heard me mention at other meetings, we are really looking at our reading intervention materials, what we're using and trying to find, um, those programs that will meet our students' needs the best. So we have that upcoming training and people will be doing that in the summer. So, um, we really appreciate them being able to do that. And I think that's it. Um, because you're well aware, you've heard about the extended school year dates and time. So there's nothing new with that. So are there any questions you have? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Ms. Gronsa stole, stole my, my introduction to Randy Peyton. She did such a nice job. I won't have to, to do that. But, uh, as she mentioned, Randy Peyton is our new special ed director, um, replacing Deanna on, on July 1st. And again, um, just want to thank the, the special ed staff that was a part of the process, our admin team, Deanna for giving tours. Um, Ms. Getzko representing the board on the, on the final interview team. Um, this is a really good process. Uh, we had three real quality candidates. Um, Ms. Peyton will be a, a real, real good addition to our team. And again, like Deanna said, is very excited to get on board, uh, once her school year ends. Um, so get a chance to, to meet her as well. So, um, also, um, just wanted to highlight a couple of other pieces. We had, um, uh, we, about two weeks ago, we had an opportunity to look at four different, uh, website vendors. Uh, Mr. Burns was able to join us uh, and gave us some really good feedback as well. And from his experiences in the, in the tech world. Uh, we did decide on Final Site as our new, um, provider. Um, really excited about, uh, Final Site. I think they are really, um, kind of a key player in the educational side of websites and, and really, uh, do a, a great job. And I think, uh, we're in that process now of starting initial conversations of what that's going to look like to turn it over and hopefully this summer, um, migrate ours, um, current site onto the Final Site, which they provide for free, which is a big undertaking, uh, in itself. Um, but we are really looking for the end product is going to be, is really sharp. So, um, the reason being again, our, our current site is expiring. Uh, Final Site actually bought the company out. Um, so uh, they're no longer going to support that at the end of the twenty-four year, I think, uh, two thousand twenty-four. So, um, that's exciting and, and you'll see that rolling out here hopefully by the time school starts. One last piece too, uh, the educational foundation, uh, just wanted to make a note. Uh, they are ramping up again. Uh, they are, uh, doing the side player side by side again. Um, and, um, doing an October 7th, um, casino, not royale, royal night. Just a note there, game night. So kind of a casino night, um, right here, I believe. Um, and again, um, they're a busy group and they are very ambitious again this year. They're also doing the, the senior scholarships on May 11th, uh, on Rails to Trails. Um, they are doing a, a first time event. It's a, a trap shoot. So, um, again, those who are trap shooters, uh, July 28th, uh, mark your calendars. It's the first, um, Own the Crown Trap Shootout. Um, again, sponsored by the Ed Foundation Group. And then also, uh, something I'm looking forward to on the 28th during Rails to Trails as well, both of these are Rails to Trails events, is a alumni all school tour of our high school and middle school, um, uh, construction work that was completed. So we'll be, um, getting a people on a bus down here downtown, driving them up to the, uh, middle school and, and the suburban high school for a tour of those facilities. So, um, excited about that. And then, um, again, November and December, they do their annual endowment drive. So that's a, a big, uh, big piece for them. So again, just a So that's a big, big piece for them. So again, just a very active group, and they continue to be very ambitious in funding those scholarships for our students. So thank you to them. That's all I have.
Was the, what do I call it, demo sites that we received from Ms. Mizuraka, was that from the Final Site?
Yeah, that was the one to pick the base plate. Yeah, yeah. So that is Final Site. So the three or four different options you had to choose from. It was pretty unanimous. I think it was the Madison one that was the, I don't know if you can remember or not, but that was the overall choice of the group. So that's what she's moving forward with.
Awesome.
Thank you. Any board member reports from committees over the last month?
No, I think all the ones I were, I'm bent to have been highlighted with our infographic from marketing and communication. And Mr. Vio pointed out what we talked about at Teaching and Learning.
Southwest met Tuesday. We really had, I would say, three things that really stood out. School IQ came for their strategic plan presentation, which was a lot of details. And I think a lot of us were a little surprised because it, as we know, Southwest Metro is very specific. It's more kids that are Level 4 that are there. They're having issues, obviously, in their district. So they come over to Southwest and hopefully they're able to go back. So I think we were expecting it to be a little bit different, but they surveyed admin staff, and so we have a nice little start to the strategic plan, which was nice. And they came and spoke to us about it. Then we also approved the purchase plan for East Union, so hopefully that works out. So we had to, I think the dollar amount is 1.517 million. So hopefully that all works. And we did definitely want to make sure that happened before the June 30th, where there's all that special funding, that if it's not used, well, it's, it can be used towards purchase for the special ed building. So that would be great. And if all goes through, hopefully this fall, they would have four classrooms. Half-day treatment would be half of it, and then the other half would be Level 4. And then something I'm glad we maybe don't have to deal with, but they do, they have a ton of calendars to look at every year, three different ones. But what I found very interesting is, so there's a traditional, then there's a stretch calendar, and then they actually have a four-day calendar. And being that it's hard for them to find staff, this one, right now, they're using it for adults' basic ed, which they really use that already. So, but they're hoping that with that, they can hopefully get some more staff interested in the four-day week so that they could work the four days. And let's say they decide to work on a Friday, they could hopefully sub and just kind of help out with that shortage, which I thought was pretty interesting. So hopefully that works out. And if it does, they're hoping possibly next year, they could use the transition program, which is 18-plus, and then the day treatment as well to that. So, and who knows? I mean, I think that's a great way of using who you have, especially if it's four days, and they could get extra cash if they want or take the time off to recharge. So, yeah, and that's it. Long meeting.
Anything else? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion made to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Have a motion made by Ms. Getzko, second by Ms. Danielson. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 7:54 PM. And we will take about a five minute break.